Good evening. It is 5 o'clock on Monday, December 13th, and I would like to call this meeting of the Lansing City Council's Committee of the Whole to order. I will remind folks, visitors, guests, city council members, city staff, that there is currently a mask requirement in the City of Lansing City Hall. Please ensure that your mask or face covering is covering your mouth and your nose. We appreciate your cooperation in this manner. First things first, if we could please take a roll call.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Betts.
Here.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Jackson. You have a quorum.
Quorum is present, and Councilmember Jackson did notify me that he may be a few minutes behind coming from his place of work, so that is just putting that out there. Next up on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from November 29th, Mr. Vice President.
I would move the meeting minutes as presented.
It's a proper motion. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The next item is public comment on agenda items. You will have up to three minutes. Unlike city council, there is no sign-up sheet. We ask that you come to the podium, identify yourselves, and then we will begin the timer. So it's first come, first served. Not everyone all at once, please.
Hi, I'm Jenny Geese. I live at 220 Ferguson Street here in Lansing. I'm also the Eastfield Neighborhood Association Treasurer. Just want to say we're really grateful for the Planning Board's thoughtful and diligent attention to Eastfield's concerns regarding the noise population, sorry, noise pollution and blight. During the process of working with the Planning Board, we learned that Eastfield isn't the only neighborhood dealing with this type of issue. It's also East Village, and I'm sure there's others as well. That's why Eastfield and its neighbors are here urging your support for the amended reiteration of Act 1 of 2020. We hope that this amendment provides accountability for our neighbors and for our need in working with Sparrow. Over the years, we've had conversations with them. You know, one facilities director told us that when they bought the first commercial side of Michigan Avenue in Ferguson, that they're going to build a minimac. And obviously, that didn't happen. And, you know, a decade later, we were told that possibly they're going to build a surface parking lot, which again is not part of the Lansing master plan and not something that we want. You know, and also, I just look back at some nextdoor.com comments that, you know, back in 2016, neighbors were complaining about the noise. So this is something that we've been in conversations with with Sparrow over the years. And, you know, really what's changed was this year, there was a Sparrow had to replace an air conditioning unit on the professional side building, and they said it was only temporary. Well, that continued for three months, and it was 24 hours, very pervasive, and they didn't make any attempt to mitigate the noise. We just had to wait. So I just want to take, you know, really quickly, you know, we have a recording here that I'm going to hold up to the speakerphone, and this is on Jerome Street from a neighbor's house with the window open. And then we have it with, you know, the window, this is from the street. So I think, you know, you kind of get the point. You know that it's coming from the cooling tower utility plant, whatever you want to call it. So, you know, from our past experience, we know that leaders from Sparrow, the city and Eastfield and other community members can come together and work out solutions, just as we've done in the years past when we had a diverter installed at Jerome's, Jerome and North Home Street, which calmed the traffic on Jerome Street. So we're calling on you again to help bring leadership together, to integrate agro-forestry technology to meet our communities' needs. Working trees and more green infrastructure, and if you want to go beyond that, that's great too, provides many benefits to our environment. So I urge you again to support the amended Act 1 of 2020.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council members. My name's Guyan and current president and resident of the Eastfield Neighborhood Association. As many of you might have watched that Lansing fax made a video about Lansing, saying that Lansing, a place where a hospital is a city. To people outside Lansing, that might be a question mark, what does that even mean? But to people in Lansing, that might be a funny joke. But to people living in the neighboring community, like Eastfield, like myself and many of my neighbors included, that is a constant balancing and even frustrating situation that we have to live in 24/7 every day. So with our western boundary at North Home Street, we are the neighborhood. We are the next-door neighbors with Sparrow. So I'm here to request additional conditions to be added to Act 1, 2020. And these requests are critical to the quality of life of our neighbors and the vibrancy of the Eastfield. We're a very welcoming, diverse community, and we're representing many wonderful neighborhoods in Lansing. We appreciate the value of having a lifesaving organization like Sparrow. However, it should not come at the cost of the neighboring community. As Sparrow indicated in his mission statement, to improve the health of people in our communities by providing quality compassionate care to everyone, every time. However, the noise pollution has been a constant battle with them, and it's impacting our neighbors' mental health and even physical health. In the past summer, the noise level has reached an unhealthy level. Many of our neighbors, including myself, have lost sleep, not being able to work, focus on working home properly, even felt physically ill, and overall really affecting the quality of our life. And even months after the replacement in summer, the noise pollution remains an issue. And also, Sparrow claims to be a community-focused organization. After they have bought many houses from our neighborhood quietly, they just left them vacant to decay. And this past really strong wind weather advisory, you can, many of our neighbors can have told us that the shingles from those abandoned houses just like rain and poured down to our houses. And these used-to-be-warm-and-lovely homes are now just a cold attractor of crime and pollution. This is really a big concern to our neighborhood. And also, we have heard the consolidated plan of Lansing for the next five years, but it's just disheartening to see all these perfectly fine houses in our neighborhood are just abandoned and potentially to be demolished while housing remains to be a top priority and needs for the City of Lansing. So upon our reach, outreach to Sparrow, we have been able to communicate with them. However, little has been done to really address these two main issues that we are very concerned about. So we hope that communications continues and grows, but also, we ask you, our elected officials, to act in the interest of those you represent and hold Sparrow accountable for their actions. So please add those conditions to Act 1 of 2020. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Margaret Tesaro, and I live at 206 Horton Street. I also live in the Eastfield Neighborhood Association. And I'm here just to echo the comments of my neighbors and say that we are really hoping that the Lansing City Council will consider the amendments that were put forth by the Planning Board to the Act 1, 2020, street vacation. As a neighborhood association, we have had many conversations with Sparrow regarding the noise pollution and the abandoned houses that are on a block in our neighborhood. And those conversations have not proved to be very fruitful, and the noise continues to persist, and these houses remain vacant, which is really kind of a disappointment and a sore spot and eyesore in our neighborhood. So we are coming to you to ask that you consider these amendments when you are voting on the resolution for the street vacation. And we, you know, I see it as particularly an opportunity to encourage Sparrow as they continue to develop in our neighborhood and around our neighborhood, that they could adopt things like green infrastructure, noise buffering technologies, and things like that, that would make them a better neighbor. Because as it is currently, it's been quite a frustrating experience trying to work with them and trying to have them hear our concerns and respond to them, because at this point, we really haven't seen much action from them. So again, you know, part of those amendments include having the noise limits that's coming from their cooling towers just be within the legal requirement. The second part of that is adopting green infrastructure, which I think, you know, works really well with the Lansing city plan and having a greener city and using landscape technologies to act as a sound or noise buffer. And then the final part is to continue to maintain that barrier between Jerome Street at Homes, between the hospitals. So again, thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your time. We are here because we have tried to work with Sparrow as best we could, but we are really hoping that our council, our representatives, would represent our interests and work on our behalf. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Tim Damon with the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce and Council President Spatafor and city council members, thank you for the opportunity to provide a few comments tonight in support of the proposed battery facility in advancing sort of the electric vehicle technology manufacturing here in our region. So last week, the state House and Senate in a bipartisan fashion moved very quickly to adopt and pass bills that certainly going to make our state much more competitive as we continue to try and attract transformational projects such as what we're talking about here. And I liken back to thinking about historically, when you look back at previous leaders in the City of Lansing and Delta Township 20-some years ago, and the work that was done. Without that work, we're not here tonight even having this conversation. So I think, again, kind of from a historical standpoint, here we are 20 years later with something that can certainly really set our region in a new direction when it comes to automotive manufacturing and this amazing opportunity. I think it goes without saying what this proposed $2.5 billion investment means to our region, but I think when you think about solidifying our region's automotive future and without getting into the EV market and what happens to the current existing plants, as many existing suppliers here in our region, and what that looks like for us, I think the prospective project creates up to 1,700 new jobs. The economic multiplier as well, I think we've all heard those numbers, for every one OEM, automotive OEM job, seven additional jobs throughout our region. So certainly, this continues to support job growth and economic investment in there. You think about the two- to three-year construction period as well, from a trade and construction job standpoint as well, and the impact to our region. And then you think about the additional economic development opportunities that come with this and from a supplier and other high-tech manufacturing opportunities around the EV market. So I think it goes without saying, again, we're fully supportive of the project and what it means to our region's economic future. And, you know, we encourage city council to look at amending the 425 agreement with Delta Township as well as the designated Renaissance Zone to support the project as well. So thank you all.
Good evening, council. I'm Tim Salisbury, Regional President at PNC Bank, also Chair of the Board for LEAP. And like Tim Damon, I'm also here to speak on the EV plant, General Motors Project. You know, I really appreciate the tremendous work that has gone into this, especially the teamwork, so many different individuals and entities that have come together to make this possible. You know, investments of this nature are critical to the success of our region, especially the long-term viability of greater Lansing. The communities with infrastructure and manufacturing that will support the economies of tomorrow will be the winners, and I for one, I want to make sure that Lansing is a winner. And would like to thank you for taking up this matter in such short notice and appreciate you, you know, positioning the region to compete and win. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dave Muley. I live at 124 Regent Street on the East Side. Long ago, was the President of the Eastfield Neighborhood Organization. I lived there for about 20 years over in that neighborhood. I'm a strong supporter of Sparrow Hospital. I'm a strong supporter of our neighborhood, Eastfield. I've watched for 40 years the sort of tension between the two, which is inevitable with an institution like that. And so I just want to, first of all, I want to support what Eastfield is proposing or the amendments to the proposal. The noise is there. And over the years, among, there's been issues with parking, with buffering, with all those kinds of things, which is inevitable. And Sparrow, like any institution, as their leadership changes, our access changes, our ability to, you know, have someone to represent us and them, get together and actually have meaningful conversations. So I think we might be, you know, we're not at a high point, but hopefully, this will inspire them and us to come together and try to work this stuff out. In terms of the diverter, I really, I was there in, I think it was the mid or late 90s, when a lot of effort, a lot of conversation about putting that diverter in. I think it was one of the most successful things that we were able to accomplish with Sparrow, and I want you, encourage you to, you know, leave that pile of dirt there. The other thing, on a personal note, the, obviously Sparrow has designs to build a facility, and those houses that they've bought, and sadly have not necessarily maintained properly, are going to come down. There's an effort in some sections of the city or in some groups to demo, to recycle building materials. And so even though it complicates the process, we'd like you and we also to encourage them to give opportunities to salvage, you know, good quality materials inside, original oak woodwork, all the valuable materials that make a, give houses character and not just throw it in the dumpster. So we're hoping that those conversations can take place. Thank you.
Mayor Shore, President Spatafor, good evening. My name's Jeremy, Jeremy Widdam. I'm the Chairman of the Board for the Eaton County Board of Commissioners. When I spoke with Mayor Shore this morning, we texted the way everybody communicates today and gave me the opportunity to come and be seen. Am I doing okay being seen? Okay, thank you. I'm here to see what we can do as Eaton County. The land transfer agreement to 425 has been in full force and effect for probably close to 20 years. But for this battery, this battery plant, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Serendipity is striking, folks. We have the opportunity, when we put our egos and our hidden agendas aside, we can have a plant where our friends and our neighbors are going to work to help produce the next generation of vehicles that are going to be sold throughout the world. We're going to have Lansing area pride worldwide. So I'm asking you tonight to please proceed, and if you need anything from me, as the current Chairman of the Board for Eaton County, I'm at the ready. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Nancy Malo. I'm President of the Eastside Neighborhood Organization. I'm here to support my other friends, my other neighborhood groups that are within our boundaries. Sparrow plays a huge role within our city and our neighborhood community when it comes to healthcare and has provided various incentives and opportunities for many. The Eastside Neighborhood Organization has worked hard over the years on numerous issues concerning Sparrow. Yes, we have had our share of ups and downs and disagreements, but in the end, we work together to bring a positive solution. Right now, our neighborhoods around Sparrow are dealing with a serious noise issue from Sparrow's power plant that occurs at different times of day. I took the liberty to visit the surrounding areas at various times, locations, and the noise at different levels depending on your location, and it can be very overpowering. We need a permanent solution so that everyone can continue to coexist in a positive way. I would like to officially ask the city council to seriously look into the decimal rating ordinance concerning our hospitals, commercial businesses, industrial areas, and even highway traffic noise that are adjacent to or surrounding our neighborhoods. This could mean creating different levels depending on the type of issue and area. Does our city even have a decimal rating concerning these types of areas? Your help to a timely solution is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Selzer, and my husband and I have a rental property at 222 North Homes. My husband bought the property back in 2016, and we immediately became aware of the noise issue. I had made several attempts to reach out to the facilities director at Sparrow. Those calls were never returned. And so I'm here tonight to support our neighborhood association and those advocating for change. And I'd like to agree with the previous presenter on assessing those decimal levels based on where you are. Our home at 222 North Homes is directly across the street from the utility facility that's making this noise, and we currently have a family there at our rental property, and I am concerned that they are living with this day-to-day like my husband and I had too. So again, I'm here to support our neighborhood association and their engagement, and I would encourage direct engagement of those houses directly impacted by the noise. Thank
Hi there. I'm Chris Thompson. I live a few blocks from Sparrow Hospital. There's a lot of blight in Lansing. You might be aware of this problem. And some of this blight, where does it come from? Is it because Lansing's a fairly poor city? I think that's part of the problem, but there's also businesses that are quite wealthy that are contributing to the blight. And Sparrow is a good example of this. Sparrow takes up about one city block, and it generates $1 billion in revenue every year. Now, they have a couple of different healthcare organizations in different communities, but the Sparrow Main Hospital probably accounts for 2/3 of that revenue. So this is, this is an extremely wealthy organization. The actual campus is only about half of the property that they own. So as you're driving down Michigan Avenue, the footprint of Sparrow is actually about double what you would expect. So the property actually extends about two blocks east as well as two blocks west. And there's so much blight on this larger footprint that there's garbage that actually rains down on my house. I brought some of that, these are shingles from the roofing of some of the houses that Sparrow owns. And we had a windstorm a couple days ago, and this, these like shingles actually fell on my, on my yard. So the situation is that Sparrow is looking to expand. They want to spend $800 million to build some additional facilities, and they're asking for your help. They want some additional property. They want some additional roads so that they can operate in that space. But the question is, are you just going to give them a green light? Or are you going to hold them to a higher standard and actually fix some of this blight that's been happening? And this happened, this has been going on since before the pandemic, and it's, it is, like, the past two years have been extremely stressful for the hospital, but they are choosing to expand at this moment, so they have the capacity to fix these problems.
Anyone else wishing to address the committee of the whole? Very good. Thank you very much. Speaking of, the next item on our agenda is the resolution for Act 1 of 2020, the street vacation of Jerome Street and West Holmes Street. I don't know who's addressing this one. It was here on November 8th. It went back to the Development and Planning Committee. It's before us now after going back to the Planning Board. Anyone from law wish to address it? No?
I will turn this over to one of our development attorneys, but I might mention that there were issues that came out of the Planning Board with conditions, and we have researched their conditions and found they are not consistent with statutory requirements and should not be part of the vacation resolution.
Did everyone on council yet?
Thank you, President Spatafor. I appreciate the city attorney's opinions on this, and thank you for that hard work, because that was a concern of mine as well, how we integrate some of the concerns that we're hearing now and whether or not we could integrate them into the existing resolution. I think that there's an opportunity for further discussion and even an opportunity for some other city departments to weigh in, maybe code enforcement on some of the homes and some other issues. Unfortunately, I would agree that I'm not quite sure that this, this resolution is the mechanism to address some of those concerns, valid concerns, but of course, but this, this resolution isn't the mechanism to resolve those. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I guess my first question would be to the city attorney's office, is normally there is an attorney that is at the Planning Board. So can someone tell me when this recommendation came out of the Planning Board, were they told that this was ultra-virus and that this was not something that could be upheld?
Yeah, I'll turn to Greg. Greg, if you want to step down to the, one of the seats down there, maybe, I don't think Mr. Lawrence is coming this evening. Whichever one.
Doesn't matter. Just make sure your mic is on.
Yes, yeah, just make sure the mic's on.
So briefly, Councilmember Wood, not knowing what the recommendations were going to be and knowing that they were going to be recommendations non-binding, at the time, I thought it most prudent to wait, do the research, and verify whether they were ultra-virus or not before offering some kind of opinion out or making any kind of recommendation out to the council. So I, I was at the Planning Board. I listened to everything and waited until recommendations were made and voted on by the Planning Board, and then came back, this was last week, and then started doing the research.
So what I'm understanding is that because it's an act and not a special land use, that we cannot put additional requirements on this? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, and I, the only clarification I would offer is use of the word "act." Act is a, that is a term of art that the Planning Board uses when it's conducting reviews so that they can keep them all straight. But because it's a vacation, under the
You don't mean in a
Land Division Act, Land Division Act, you, you can't attach permanent or ongoing conditions or any kind of condition that would create a termination of a vac, you can't undo a vacation, basically.
So this is either a support or not support of the vacation?
Correct. I mean, when, if council resolves to vacate, then once it gets recorded, it is permanent. Once it gets recorded with the Register of Deeds, that's the, it's a, I don't know. It's a strange life for vacation. Once council resolves to vacate, that starts it in motion. It doesn't actually take effect until it's recorded with the Register of Deeds, and then the state doesn't actually acknowledge it until it's been transmitted to the Office of Remonumentation, which, again, is strange, but nonetheless, how it works.
Mr. Chair, may I ask Mr. Venker to also address that some of these conditions are ongoing conditions anyway. They don't have to be particular to this vacation, such as the noise. I'm referring to your memo.
Oh, sure. Yeah, and I, I, of the three conditions that were voted on and recommended by the Planning Board, the first two, the noise ordinance is a standing requirement of everyone in the city, so attaching it to the, to the, this resolution would be redundant and perhaps confusing if it were to be attached, even though it really can't. And then as it relates to that diverter that is referenced, and that's where the corners are sort of closed off, so you can either turn left from Holmes or turn left from Holmes onto Jerome, that strip of land that is now the diverter, if you look at the map, and I went over this with if you look at the map, and I went over this with Public Service Director Kilpatrick, that strip is being retained by the city. So it's literally, they carved it so it's just that edge of the roadway that is getting vacated out.
So the last one on here is the green infrastructure.
Correct.
So I'm not sure whether it's you or Mr. Smirka that can answer this question. If council were to do a resolution that stated that we wanted Sparrow to sit down with the neighborhood and work toward the issues that have been brought out and then bring a report back to the Development and Planning Committee, is that is the will of the body? Is that something that you see as probable, something that we could do?
Certainly, you can do something like that. I wouldn't put that as part of the vacation resolution.
No, I know we can't do it there. But what I'm saying is that if we, tonight, were to do a short resolution that said that we wanted Sparrow to sit down with the neighborhood to work through the issues that have been brought up to council and that they report back to the Development and Planning Committee within the next 60 days because we have holiday in there, that that would be a resolution that we could present.
Yes, as a separate resolution.
And I'm seeing Lisa and Sheri typing away, and that would be a resolution I would ask us to consider based on the fact that we can't do anything legally to make a change to this, but it shows the intent of council to get something done.
Yeah, and Lisa's going to do that. I would ask that we entertain it as a late item on the agenda introduced by you at the council meeting this evening?
That's fine.
Okay. And to be clear, though, it's not a legally binding.
I get that.
Okay, just want the folks in the audience to know it won't be legally binding that they'd have to sit down, but it's the will of the council that we would like to see some ongoing dialogue per the council member's suggestion.
And there are some, I think Jim might have been part of it, maybe not. When we were dealing with padnos over in the Tecumseh River Drive and actually hired through the city a sound expert to look at ways that they could help padnos reduce the sound that was coming from an industrial site that was affecting the neighborhood. So council has done these things where we've worked with the companies and the neighborhood before to try to achieve what we need to get done.
That's correct. I recall that.
Yes, okay. So that would be, I know we don't have it in writing, but I'm requesting the resolution, as I have stated, be-- yes, Lisa drafted for a late item this evening. Thank you.
She's working on that right now. But it will be at the city council meeting, not committee of the whole. Okay, with that, then, I would ask Councilmember Betts to say something.
Thank you, President Spatafor, sorry for interrupting your train of thought. Mayor Schor, I have a question for you. This is clearly a violation of our, is he not here? Oh, my goodness, I missed him. All right, well, I guess I will ask you, Mr. City Attorney. This has been a clear violation of the noise ordinance for the past, since 2016. Do you have record of this in your office from any departments within the city? What actions have you taken or the city taken in regard to this property thus far?
Well, my independent recollection is that I have not become aware of any complaint. Normally, what the process is, it's either a police report that's been filed or we get a direct complaint. And I'm not aware of a noise complaint of that nature, or this could come from public service, too. It's hard to deal with a mask and talk at the same time. We are not aware of any complaints that have been lodged with our office on the violation of the noise ordinance. That doesn't mean it hasn't happened in the past, but my current tenure, I haven't seen anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Schor, I appreciate that you're back. Who, which department and who is in charge of enforcing the noise ordinance in your administration?
I know Brian McGrane has been working on this today with the planning board. I can get you that answer, who specifically?
Yeah, I guess my only request to your department here is it sounds like we've been having complaints since 2016. Somebody needs to go out and measure this. I've talked with us. Sue Statuak about light and noise, and she seems to have a pretty good handle on what needs to be done here. So I would appreciate a return call at some point to figure out what we can do because this is a clear violation that's been going on for some time. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Betts. Other, yeah, Mr. Vice President.
Just because the language is a little bit funny, so I just want to make sure that I understand what we're doing with the passing of this resolution. So we are, we're continuing with the five conditions that we approved as a body back in August of 2020. And then there's the one additional in terms of the conveyance of the sanitarian storm. Sue is correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
With that, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Vice President Hussein. Is there any further discussion on this item? Thank you for your work on this, everyone. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item C is a resolution amending the social districts to include Sidebar Lansing's LLC DBA Sidebar Slide, Sidecar Slider Bar, say that with a mask on, five times fast, 500 East Michigan Avenue, and the Potent Potables Project LLC DBA, the Creole Burger Bar in Southern Kitcher Kitchen, 1218 Turner Road. Let's make sure before we move this that it calls it Kitchen, not a Kitcher. All right, so city attorney's office has drafted this ordinance, "Resolution for Us," just adding these and correcting the name of one of the properties in Old Town, adding them to the already existing social district. Any questions on that one? Mr. Betts, Councilmember Betts?
Thank you, President Spatafor. I have not seen a map of how far we're extending this. Are we extending to include 500 East Michigan Avenue, the entire block?
It's not an extension. It's just adding folks that are already in--
Oh, adding, okay. Oh, we already have the map, so, okay. Never mind. All right, thank you.
Does nothing to the boundaries. There is a resolution coming next year to play with the boundaries a bit based on liquor control feedback, but it's the last meeting of the year, and I didn't do my homework. So we're going to just do this one. Mr. Vice President.
Sure, I would move the, oops, sorry. I would move the resolution, sorry, "Amending Social Districts to Include Sidecar Lansing LLC" as well as the Potent Potables Project as qualified entities within their respective districts.
It's a proper motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Next item, item D, "Setting a Public Hearing Will Take the Two-- Setting a Public Hearing Relative to Ordinance to Amend Chapter 890 Poverty Exemption Guidelines Reform." The assessor's office sent this one down. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to add on this one? Sharon? I was going to say Shannon. Sharon, would you step forward, please? Maybe give us a quick rundown?
Yeah, it's Sharon.
Yeah, Sharon, here to help.
Yeah, basically, there was some legislation passed in very late 2020 that required us to change our guidelines. Basically, we used to have a formula that took into account the amount of refund that a person would get from the state on their income taxes. Instead of that, we'll be giving 100% exemption to all applicants. If you're disabled or a senior on a fixed income, then that 100% exemption would apply forever as long as you qualify. If you're not, if you don't fall into one of those categories, it'll be sort of a step up. It'll be 100% the first year, then 50% for the next few years, and then stepped up to 25% exemption. And then the only other change is that we're requiring to review the income of all owners and not just the applicant.
Are there any questions for the assessor? Councilmember Wood.
Will they have to apply for this yearly then, still?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that, though, I will ask for a motion to pass a resolution setting the public hearing for January 10.
So moved.
It's a proper motion by the vice president. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a resolution providing for an exemption to the city charter, provision 6-401, allowing for the extension of multi-year contracts for the open positions of the police chief and the fire chief. I think we talked about this already at the last-- maybe I just talked about it with someone else. Mr. Mayor, would you want to?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something that has come up several times. There are questions and concerns that we have candidates that might want to be able to utilize multi-year contracts, especially with our police and fire. It came up with the fire search. I know the union president had a conversation with me, and we really just want the option to be able to offer more than a year to ensure stability within these two departments as we are hiring for the directors, for the chiefs. Under the charter, the language that was inserted a few years ago, there is an allowance for an exemption if we can bring to you a need. So we are bringing to your request. It's not necessarily going to happen, but we think that having that option in discussions and negotiations for both chiefs would be important.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have questions from council members Spitzley, Hussein, and Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am supportive of this. I think that as we are trying to attract the best and the brightest, we have to be flexible. I don't, I couldn't fault somebody for not wanting to take a position here because they only have a one-year contract. My question to you is, I mean, do you have a year amount in mind? I mean, this kind of keeps it open-ended, which kind of gives me a little bit of heartburn. And so I'm wondering, do you have a certain year amount in mind when you're looking at this?
That's a very fair question. Probably two or three would be where I wouldn't go much further than that. If you want to stick a year in there, I don't have a problem with that. Again, we left it open-ended just for negotiation's sake, but I wouldn't go much further than that myself.
Thank you, Mayor. And, Mr. President, if I may, I like three years.
Three years maximum.
You know, and so I don't know how we do that, but I would propose that we have a three-year limit in this resolution. It does still give flexibility. It's reasonable. So do I just--
Yeah, I think in the "now therefore be resolved," you could say, and therefore will allow the mayor to offer up to three-year employment agreements to qualify candidates for the current open positions of police chief and fire chief? Does that satisfy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, are you comfortable with three?
I am very comfortable with that. Thank you, councilwoman. As long as that's okay under charter, but I am extremely comfortable with that, so I would be supportive of that. Thank you.
Offer up to. Yeah, offer up to.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Then we had Councilmember Hussein and Wood, if that didn't address your question.
Sure, and I'm, well, I'm not a lawyer, but I think the plain English of the charter amendment does allow for that, and I think that'd be appropriate. And that was actually my question. Certainly don't want to impact strategy. But can, because things have been so transparent with regards to the police search and since we're having this conversation now, can you tell us where we're at with that?
I can. The police search, you'll see something tomorrow. We were going to put something out today. I guess I'll give you all the tip, and everybody watching, you'll see it tomorrow morning. It's my intention to recommend Chief Ellery Soesby as our next police chief. So I guess you all and everybody who watches city council gets to hear that first, but that will be announced tomorrow. And I do appreciate everybody who weighed in on the decision. I did my due diligence over the week. Fire chief search is out. It's out right now. I believe it closes in early January. And we'll continue to move down the field with that. I spoke with Linda Sanchez-Gazella this morning, and that is, it's in the field.
And just very quickly, because we are on the subject of these two potential appointments, so I would assume that process is going to be essentially a carbon copy of the police chief process?
I think it's going to be similar.
Election committee, the whittling down, the public forum, all of that?
The intention is to have it to be similar. We haven't finalized that. We haven't seen what the candidates look like when they come in. It'll be two or three, but it'll be similar.
And then just very, because we're talking about process, and we do have law here, what, so you said you're going to make a recommendation. You make a recommendation to the police board commissioners in this case.
Correct.
What happens if they turn that recommendation down?
That's a good question, then. I would have to check in with law on that one. I don't know if we have to start over. It's a very good question. I don't know that it's happened in some time, but if they turned it down, I would defer to law on that question.
Jim's getting his charter out.
And I'll read it to you real quick. The language is pretty clear. It says, "Article 4, Section 307.02, the chief police shall be appointed by the mayor in consultation with the Board of Police Commissioners and subject to confirmation by a majority of the members of the Board of Police Commissioners serving." I think in addition to Article 4, Section 307.03, it says, "The mayor may suspend the chief of police and shall notify the Board of Police Commissioners of the reasons for the suspension. The Board shall convene at the earliest opportunity. After the suspension, shall determine by a majority of the board serving whether the suspension shall continue. The chief of police may be removed by the mayor only with the concurrence of a majority of the board serving." I think those two, in combination with one another, I think the intent, or the spirit, I should say, is that the police board of commissioners has the final say in all things pertaining to the hiring and the firing of, correct?
I'm not an attorney either, but--
I would assume. I'm just curious, because we have had, actually, board of commissioners reach out to us. And that was before any recommendation, you know, obviously, you haven't even made the recommendation yet, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, I mean, it's my understanding that it's the mayor's appointment, and it's up to them to confirm. If they don't confirm, it's still my appointment. So then I would either, you know, I would have to make a decision. Do I want to bring him back once again? Do I want to move on to someone else? Do I want to restart the process? The language that you read in that first paragraph, I read that as "I recommend", similar to what we do here with appointments. I recommend, and they confirm, and if they don't confirm, it's still my appointment. So I would make a decision on what to do next. I hope it doesn't come to that.
There are two separate issues here. One is the contract issue and the length of the term with the resolution you're authorizing. The second issue is, there has to be a confirmation by the Board of Police Commissioners of the candidate. That's in a separate section of the charter at 4, and I think you've read that correctly, 4307.3.
Okay, any, Councilmember Wood?
And I think one of my questions was just answered, and that has to do with the fact that these, even though we're entering into a contract, they are at-will employees and can be terminated. So I'm just clarifying that that hasn't changed. And two, if we entered into a, let's say, an up to a three-year contract, and this was an election year, and you weren't re-elected, that again, because they're an at-will employee, those other two years of the contract would not be something that they would be held to. Is that correct?
It's the office of the mayor that's important. You're not the person. If that's in the charter about the at-will, that would control, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
For the purposes of this resolution, that was certainly factored in, which is another reason I wouldn't go more than about three years because I have a term of four years and certainly, yeah. That was certainly a factor as well.
Well, and I have one question real quick, too, Mr. City Attorney. This is only for these particular vacancies, right? We're only extending it for this particular set of vacancies? It's not forever for the chief of police and chief of fire?
No, this is for this particular, the resolution should, I'll have to look at the resolution, but it was intended for this selection process now.
Sure, okay.
Period.
That's all I had? Oh, Councilmember number?
For current open positions.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so when we talk about current open positions, we're talking specifically only police and fire, not any other department heads.
Correct.
And, I mean, the decision's already been made for the police chief. And I don't know if that three-year or whatever contract played into that one, but being at-will and under contract seem disconnected to me in that they can choose to leave whenever they want to, but if we terminate under an at-will, there's still going to be liability for fulfillment of the contract and financial issues with that. What is that, how does that play out? What is that, how does that play out? If there is a contract for three years, we, somebody decides not doing a good job, we're going to terminate. What is our obligation as a city under that contract?
Well, it's like any other employment contract. It's a matter of negotiation between the appointing party and the candidate. Uh, it, there's more than just term involved in, in a, in a contract. You have benefits, you have other, you know, time off, things of that nature, uh, equipment, money, whatever. So there are other things that go into that, and that's how you, it's consistent with at-will. At-will means, uh, yes, you can get terminated, and then it's a matter of negotiation. Is, is there a severance payment that goes with that? You know, that's all a matter of negotiation. What you're doing is authorizing the offer of a contract that goes for more than one year. We still have that other charter provision about the at-will. In between all that is a negoti, negotiation that happens between the mayor and the candidate, confirmed by the Board of Police Commissioners.
The charter also, if I may, has a restriction on employment contracts, including terms that provide for a payment at the time of separation from employment in excess of any compensation derived from vested or accrued benefits or payments required by law. And all we're exempting from the charter provision is the length of term of the contract.
I guess I just don't understand the benefit, then, when it's all negotiated anyway, to have, except that it would renew every year annually. What is, what is the incentive, then, for a candidate truly, other than, you know, psychologically, I got a three-year contract, but if there is no severance issue, if there's, if we terminated and they don't have any rights to claim the rest of their contract, then what is the benefit? Or conversely, if we were to sever one year in, what rights do they have to sue us for the remaining two years?
I think she's, you mean it?
I mean, so...
Well, we can't, we, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna jump in here real quick. I mean, Adam read a provision about having the police chief removed for misconduct. We can't, we can't remove someone without cause. I don't care if they're an at-will employee or not. They have rights. They have due process rights. We've, we've removed department heads before. They've gone through the negotiation process. They've, you know, you've reached a settlement. It doesn't matter if it's one year or three-year, but the benefit for the person coming on board is that if I'm leaving, you know, Burbank, California to come to Lansing, Michigan, I'm not going to come here for just a one-year contract that provides me uncertainty. A three-year contract provides me with a little bit more certainty, and it's three years because the mayor's position is four years. So it's, it's within that time, but also providing that latitude that you could offer him a year position, a year contract in your last year, um, as mayor, if you so choose. Um, but it does give, um, a certain amount of certainty in my mind, um, for someone that you're hiring to bring in, that they have this three-year contract, and at the end of this year, they don't have to worry about whether or not you're going to, you know, not renew their contract unless it's for cause.
Yeah. Councilmember Spitzley reminded me, thank you, uh, yes, there is a property right recognized by the courts in public employment, so, uh, your comments regarding just cause are appropriate now. And again, all of that can be negotiated within the parameters of the contract.
Okay. Mr. Vice President?
Sure, I would move the resolution with the amended now therefore be resolved. So in that third line, um, it would state that, uh, this will now allow the mayor to offer up to a three-year employment agreement to a qualified candidate for the current open positions. With that said, I'd move on the resolution.
It is a proper motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, uh, seven to one. Next item is a resolution, uh, allowing for the issuance of sewage disposal system revenue bonds. Who here will be addressing that wonderful sounding item?
Can I answer any questions?
Alex here.
Make a statement.
Thank you.
The, the, Alec Malvitas from the Public Service Department. Um, the two projects that are the subject of this SRA loan, uh, what's, should be noted is the one project is a two-year standard CSO project. That project is actually specifically named in the administrative consent order we have with the state of Michigan. That one's on the eastern portion of the Colonial Village area. The other project, although not specifically named in the ACO, is a sanitary sewer overflow control project that's in the spirit of the ACO and is required by the ACO, uh, the administrative consent order. So this is standard proceeding with the CSO control program, basically. And with that, if you folks have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Any questions for Alec? Seeing none, Mr. Vice President, if we could dispose of this one?
Sure, I would move the resolution.
Resolution has been moved properly. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Next item is related to the participation agreement in the partial settlement of the national prescription opiate litigation, as well as the state and local government interest rate agreement concerning the allocation of settlement proceeds in the national opioids litigation, and I will turn that over to law. Or, Mr. Abud, oh, there he is. Mr. Abud, welcome back to City Council.
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, these two resolutions regarding the opioid, uh, settlement, this is a partial settlement. It's with four defendants. We made a presentation about this in more detail in closed session with, uh, council, but, uh, for the purposes tonight, this is two resolutions. The first one is for participation in this partial settlement, and the importance of this is all the governmental entities are weighing in within the state of Michigan to see if they're going to participate. And the return to the state is based upon the participation of the governmental entities. For instance, if we have 80% participation, then out of the amounts that are coming to the state, those will be reduced by 20%. So we're trying to get to 100% participation. That's the way, that, that generates the most amount of dollars to the state of Michigan. The second resolution is about the allocation, and the settlement has a, the global settlement class has a allocation default formula of 15% to the state, 15% to the governmental entity, and then 70% to a fund that's administered by a third party. The state of Michigan, however, has negotiated, uh, a resolution whereby, unlike the tobacco settlement, 50% of the proceeds of the settlement will go to the state, 50% will be, go to the governmental entities. So the, the governmental entities will be receiving a larger portion from this type of a settlement basis and allocation. So for these reasons in law, you know, we, we are recommending both of the resolutions, and I'm happy to answer any particular question you may have.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Abud. Seeing no questions, I'd asked it for a resolution.
Can I make a comment?
Sure, go for it.
Council asked that we register with the national site, and, and I will assure the council that we have done that. And once the resolutions, if this resolution passes, we will submit it to the proper parties also.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President?
Sure, so the, the first resolution deals with the participation, uh, as, as referenced by Mr. Abud. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
It's a proper motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Vice President.
Sure, and the second pertains to the allocation, I'd move the resolution.
It's a proper motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. The next item is a, a resolution amending, uh, allowing for the Second Amendment to the Lansing-Delta Township Public Act 425 agreement. And to kick off this discussion, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Andy Shore.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, I know this has gotten a lot of attention. Uh, I know you're all getting hit up, and I appreciate that. Um, this is really exciting. Um, we are, as we all know, we're in the game. Um, we are pushing for a, a, a battery plant, and, um, this is something that I've been working on for, for several, several weeks now, that I know Bob Trizeis has been working on for several weeks now, Carl Dorshimer. Um, and we greatly appreciate, uh, everybody here. I know there's a lot of interest. Um, I, I greatly hope and, and recommend and strongly urge council to pass these two resolutions, but I don't think I'm going to have to do a lot of arm twisting, because I think we all know the great importance of 1,700 jobs and $2.5 billion of investment in our city. Um, I do want to, to thank everybody that has, that has worked on this so far, um, from Dave Hollister 20 years ago, to, to Ken Fletcher, uh, and to, again, to LEAP, and to our economic development staff. Um, it was great to see Jeremy Wittem here. He had to leave to go, um, to Delta Township, because I think they have a board meeting tonight also. We know the Board of Water and Light has been working hard on this. Uh, I think this is one of the best partnerships we've seen in this area in quite some time, and we are aggressively fighting to get this, uh, battery plant here in our city. The only other thing I'll add is that, um, as Bob Trizeis, I'm, I'm stealing all your thunder, Bob, I'm sorry, um, but as Bob Trizeis will continually say, when you have two plants, uh, and, you know, we had to go through this Keep GM effort 20 years ago, having a battery plant here means product here, means, you know, we don't have to worry about this for another 50 years. Um, so there is so many positives here. I'm really excited. Um, we will, we'll do all we can, and I know that, that these two resolutions now and the one that you have coming up in a week or two will be an important, a huge piece of the puzzle towards bringing this to Lansing. So I, I appreciate your swift consideration. I know I, I've talked to most of you, and I had to ask the council president something I never like to do, which is take up something up all in one day, um, but I think you all understand the urgency. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Trizeis, did you want to present with Mr. Dorshimer?
Can we go down?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I will say our next meeting is at seven, but don't take that as a challenge. Okay, very good. What's that? He's been briefed on my expectations.
We talked.
First of all, thanks for coming tonight. This is very exciting news.
It really is.
As Mayor mentioned, about being part of the next phase of mobility and electrification of automotive industry is huge, and the potential for Lansing is great. So thank you for your efforts, and please, the floor is yours.
I, I really appreciate that, Mr. President, and Mr. Mayor as well. Thank you for your kind work.
Well, Mr. Trizeis, hold on a second.
Does, does he have a PowerPoint?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, then we'll make the...
No, no. I'm not a believer in PowerPoints. Got to talk and listen.
All right. I promise I will not interrupt you again. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, we really are excited to be here tonight, and Mayor Shore, I, I just really want to just echo your comments and, and thank you for your leadership. Um, our region and state are competing right now with a number of other states to land a very futuristic massive project the mayor referenced a moment ago, that will genuinely set the course for our region and state in an important industry. It's the largest economic development project in the history of our region times two. That's how big this is tonight that we're taking a look at. Um, it's also somewhat of our collective last chance, and I'll talk more about that in a little bit, but as the mayor mentioned, this is a two-and-a-half billion-dollar plant being, um, that we're being allowed to bid on. Two-and-a-half million square foot EV car electric battery plant to be owned by Altium, and Altium is a partnership between GM and LG Chem. Um, it's proposed to be built on 590 acres that are currently vacant adjacent to the GM Delta Lansing plant. Altium, uh, the proposed site is currently in the 425 agreement area between the city and township, but that agreement expires in 2025, only three years from now, which means potentially a major revenue loss for both the city and the township at that time, if it were just to expire. The project promises very good paying jobs of all varieties, starting in 2025, um, and peaks in 2029, and who knows beyond there, for decades beyond, but that would be 1,700 jobs total by 2029, 1,000 2025. Um, if we're selected, construction would begin first quarter 2022. So there really is urgency here, and of course, um, prices here tonight, as I can mention, and others, but, you know, we just think that there could be more than several thousand construction workers for about three years on the site, so that's incredibly great news as well. From LEAP's perspective, we have strategized for a year, I would say, me maybe obsessively, that we need to land an EV electric battery plant. Uh, most people don't know, but I'll mention it tonight, there was a failed attempt by LEAP a year ago, and, uh, we were one of three finalists. There, the other two finalists were two different states, and, um, to my amazement, we lost it. I mean, I really couldn't believe it. Uh, it, um, but that, we just doubled down our efforts. We knew we had to be more. We were noisy and cranky at a state level about that situation and that, um, the state needed to do a lot more. And, uh, um, I think, uh, well, let me go on here, and I'll mention why I think things change for us, but during this last year, we've worried that without, uh, a, a project like this, that maybe, me speaking, not GM for sure here, I want to emphasize that, that, that those assembly plants and the supplier projects, supplier plants around, um, could be at some risk in the long-term future. Um, we are aware that, as I mentioned, GM announced one plant a year ago in Tennessee and one in Ohio the year before that. Ford did a massive multi-tier, several campus electric battery announcement, Kentucky and Tennessee, which I think is what shook up the whole state and everybody and woke us up finally. Um, now, last week Toyota announced their, uh, electric battery plant in North Carolina, and we argue these are not just plan announcements, but these are declarations shaping the future of the auto industry itself. Our competition and the stakes are clear to you and us. Those states, each one offered massive incentives to win those projects at least a half a billion each, um, from the state to those plants. All those other states, there's only a few of these announcements going on in the entire world, and just a very, very few here in the United States. We are in the most elite company tonight to have a chance to seriously propose this, but it does require, uh, the sort of response, um, because of the, sort of the, the shape, the shape of it into the future. Um, I do want to mention that multiple critical bills have passed the state house and senate that are also crucial to, potentially crucial to the overall package. LEAP has been very involved in, in those, as well as Mayor Shore. Governor Whitmer deserves enormous credit, who has been very involved, in fact, in direct meetings with this entire proposal, and we congratulate and thank her for her leadership, as well as Democrats and Republicans in the House and the Senate. A local, or a, a sort of remarkable, rare bipartisan moment where we all put everything aside and just simply did what's right for the people, and that is what we're doing tonight. Um, the Capitol Caucus, uh, for the most part, was totally supportive of these bipartisan bills as well. So we can gain so much as a community, um, and from the state perspective with this project. The project represents a secure electric car-making future for our region and state, along with, we think, the ability to maybe then recruit chip making and other high-technology related companies, advanced suppliers and so forth, that might come along with the new technology foundation that we're laying here. As Mayor Shore, uh, announced, 1,700 jobs potentially, the thousands of construction workers, the multiplier effect throughout our region will be very, very significant. Like you, and I know every one of you, you wish to increase population and disposable income and have more customers for small businesses on our main streets. This is about the best way we could possibly accomplish those kinds of goals. Um, without this project, as I mentioned, we do think that there's some risk to the, to the ecosystem of the current, uh, auto, auto plants that are here as long, as long as those suppliers. Tonight, we're asking Lansing, Delta Township, and the Lansing Board of Water and Light to help our community put together the required and necessary regional package to land this project. LEAP will deliver that package this Wednesday morning, and the state will hopefully have its own package to deliver. So tonight, it's an amended 425 agreement. We'll continue the revenue sharing to Delta and Lansing for another 25 years, and also provide for a renewal, renewable energy renaissance on designation for 18 years, and a 198 for 12 years plus two years of construction. Additionally, an important electric rate must be, um, voted on by Board of Water and Light. I do want to mention that Dick Pefley has been incredible in this whole thing as well. The electric rates are one of the key factors why we cannot beat southern states. The electric rates are one of the key factors why we cannot beat southern states. And we're lucky to have a publicly owned utility like Board of Water and Light that can be nimble and flexible and smart enough in these one-time scenarios to do something important for a project like this. Really, if not for them, then the rest of us wouldn't be here. Their incentive basically is setting the tone for us all. These four regional pieces will conclude our package, and we believe makes us very competitive with these other states. But nothing short of these all four points, 425 Renaissance Zone, 198 electric rates, if any of those were to fall short, then our package will not be complete, but I know that we're going to get it done together. As we speak, as the Lansing community, the whole is meeting, Delta Township Board of Trustees is 10 minutes in meeting and is voting on the 425 amendment, and tomorrow at 5:30 is the Board of Water and Light Board of Commissioners, and that will complete ours. Once the total package is together, as I mentioned, we will be submitting that. So today, we're building on the shoulders of the greats, as Mayor Shore mentioned, the greats from the past, from our region, who put together our retain KEEP GM effort over 20 years ago and showed the world how to make history and build partnerships, and to think regionally in a globally competitive market, and build a prosperous future by winning transformative and rare key facilities like this one. I think everyone in our region would agree that our lives would be totally different today without those efforts of the past. So just on a personal note, as I am rounding third base here, with this next phase of economic development, we have a chance to make history once again, and I do think it's important to honor for a minute Lansing Mayor Hollister, the late, down to Delta Township Supervisor Joe Drolet, Lansing Township Supervisor John Dare, the late KEEP GM Chair, I've thought about him so much the last six months, but Jack Davis, and the councils and trustee boards of the past who put those efforts together. I also want to mention Ray Tadgerson, Bob Swanson, and, you know, Art Baker was incredible too. Folks remember Art Baker of the UAW here. He was such an amazing person in my mind. So we build on their shoulders. The next generation will build next on ours if we act decisively today. In that light, I do want to mention that it's been our honor to work and put together this regional effort, but I really want to acknowledge the unbelievable leadership of Lansing Mayor Shore. Thank you, Mayor Shore, over the last six weeks. This all began about 10 days before Thanksgiving, and I'm not exaggerating, when we have been working, not day to day, but hour to hour. And Delta Township Supervisor Ken Fletcher has been incredible, and as I mentioned, Board of Water and Light CEO Dick Peffley, as well as the superb leadership of Governor Whitmer and the MEDC CEO Quentin Messer. I do want to mention Jim Smirka, as usual. His team of Lisa and Greg are amazing. My Carl Dorshmer has played a magnificent role, Keith Lambert, Ken Fletcher, his township manager, Brian Reed. The MEDC team has been led by Stacy Bowerman. I couldn't say enough about all these people, but as I mentioned, it's very important in these situations to acknowledge all the partners from start to finish. And once again, the Republicans and Democrats, Senate and House and governor, to come together the way they did in a massive bipartisan effort, they should be congratulated. We need more of that in every respect in our lives. Our regional team, as I mentioned, has been working literally hourly since 10 days before Thanksgiving on this. We've been given this particular window to execute. I always respect very much that you don't want to be rushed correctly, and you want the time to contemplate. Unfortunately, we have, Mayor Shore and us, have done absolutely the best we can with the cars that we were dealt with, and this is our window to execute. We don't have any, we can't do anything about the timing. The company feels that it is beyond urgent for them to move as quickly as possible in their decision-making for the competitive interests of their company, and other states have no problem being ready to go right now. So we have to meet that. That's why we're pressing you a little bit, everybody actually, in getting this done tonight. By the way, the 425 amended, approved tonight, the Renaissance, if you do, Renaissance Zone reviewed, approved tonight. The 198 does require the setting and then holding of a hearing, and I believe that, Mr. President, is going to be on the December 20th.
Yes, the Vice President of I has set a special meeting for Monday, the 20th, at 4:30 PM here in the chambers.
So, in conclusion, as I mentioned, this isn't just a plant or even really a company. I think you should think of it as we are partnering to retain a whole industry in our backyard, and we are one of the few in the world who have an opportunity like this in front of us tonight to do something amazing and huge. This decision is about cutting-edge technology in the planet, and on that final point, and we're sliding in home plate, I promise, Mr. President, here, is if you, like me, and I think you do, understand the absolute frightening and impacts and ramifications to the planet from global warming and climate change, approval of these incentives in support of this electric battery plant might be the most tangible, real vote that you could ever have on the overall global issue. I mean, this will really change things in the world, and actually fairly rapidly. It's not the whole solution, unfortunately, but it's about as major impact that, you know, we, or you, as elected officials locally, could have. So, I mean, we're really excited. I do want to, just one more time, make sure to emphasize that GM, Ultium, has not made a decision. They've made no promises. There's not even winks or nods. I can't say that enough. The competition is real, and I do have to say, just as a total disclaimer, this could all be for naught, and we not be selected. I want to be real about that. So GM, or GM, Carl, has a few comments about the actual numbers and what that means per incentive, and Carl, if I could ask you to continue on with that part of the conversation.
Sure, thank you, Bob. The mayor and Bob did a pretty good job of covering pretty much all the points, so I'm trying to come up with a few that I think need a little bit of clarification in terms of, you know, the GM and Ultium have, they've asked for two incentives. One is the Renaissance Zone, which essentially is an application that goes to the state, and they approve that. It would be 18 years, and the reason they do it in 18 years, typically they're 15, they do it in 18 because there's three years of construction, and then 15 years after the facility's completed essentially. And then, the Renaissance Zone doesn't cover all taxes. There's some debt millage, and so there's like six or seven mills that it doesn't cover, so therefore they've asked for a 198 to cover 50% of those, and like I say, that's only six mills out of about 71 mills. And the other point of clarification is, this property out there, it's well over 1,000 acres, the Lansing Delta Township plant is on a portion of it. These incentives do not apply to that Lansing Delta Township. That will continue to operate. Hopefully it'll be very successful because it'll have a battery plant right next to it. They will continue to pay their taxes and the income taxes, and it stays in the city of Lansing because the 425 essentially transferred it initially to the city, and by extending the 425, it stays in the city. Plus, then the new plant also is going to be in the city also. And then, as far as the value of the tax break to GM, well, it's hard to tell right now because it's going to take three years to construct this plant. It's 2.5 million acres, it's a very special type plant, a lot of personal property in there. So, really, the best I can say at this point is that, you know, it will be assessed by the city assessor, you know, using experts in real estate, and so it, you know, it's hard to determine this point. Obviously, it'd be a valuable incentive for GM. The other portion typically that I present with these incentives is, okay, what does it mean to the Lansing, the city of Lansing from a financial standpoint, from a fiscal standpoint? So, you know, of the 71 mills, approximately about 19 of those that are being abated by the Renaissance Zone for 18 years are city of Lansing. And so, just doing some rough calculations, and I bounced them off Eric Brewer here too, in terms of it's somewhere, you know, around maybe $14 million of city taxes that are essentially being exempt on this over the 25-year period, 23-year period. But if you look at the revenue sources, there's the income tax, and there's additional property tax, and there's the revenues that are coming off the Lansing Delta Township plant too. It ends up being probably seven or eight times that in terms of the city, so from a return on investment, it's a good deal. And I've shared the numbers with the mayor too, and so, you know, it really, from a financial standpoint, it's a strong deal for the city, and not only that, is it also helps the two assembly plants that are currently in the city, and helps them remain strong and productive and continue to attract investment from GM and create more jobs. So, all around, and then, you know, you've got the secondary impacts and all those that can go on and on, but really, this council typically wants to look at just the, you know, the numbers, the plain numbers. What does this mean from a financial standpoint to the city of Lansing? And I can say that it really means a lot, and it's, the return on the investment is quite substantial, and, you know, obviously from a standpoint of the city's always looking for revenue, and quite often incentives are looked at as a giveaway, but what's the city getting? The city's getting quite a bit in this instance, so it's a mutually beneficial situation, and it's really a true public-private partnership. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Bob went over the incentives. There's the approval of the extension of the 425. There is the approval of the application for the Renaissance Zone, essentially, and to be sent to the state, to the Michigan Strategic Fund, with also the recommendation of approval. And then, the 198 cannot be approved tonight because there needs to be a hearing, and that hearing would be one week from today.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? I see Councilmember Wood, then Spatley.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Having been one of the council members that was on the dais when this was first passed, the whole purpose of this, one was to add another plant, but the other part of this was to have feeder suppliers that would help make sure that the plant stayed here. We understood that at that time when we were looking at it, the strategic way that GM was looking at was how much time it was taking to truck and to rail and get parts to the factories, and to make sure that they could get those cars turned around. And so, the idea that we started with Bridgeport and some of the other feeder companies that we've had in the area where it's a five-minute truck from the plant, from the parts plant to the assembly line, and the fact that when we look at the innovation that we have with the batteries, and the idea of being able to have this here too, is extremely important. And that was part of the forethought, maybe not knowing that we were going to have a battery, but knowing that this was one of the ways that we could assure that GM would stay here and would continue to invest in our community. So, seeing this, like, you know, extremely supportive of this as we move forward. I did ask Mr. Brewer, and if he would just make a brief comment. I know that you shared some numbers with him, Carl, and I just want to know whether he believes that those numbers were conservative enough to meet some of the expectations that we have for revenue.
And like I said, you've done, known my analysis before, I'm very conservative in my nature, and I agreed with Carl Desermers' projections that he provided, and obviously those are estimates, so they're subject to change. But like I said, it's, in my opinion, it is a very financial good deal to all parties involved.
All right, thank you. So, you know, I realize we like to go through line by line and make sure where we are, but I think we did this line by line when Joe and different ones sat down with Dave Hollister and those, going through and putting this 425 agreement together in the beginning. So, I will be supporting this.
I didn't raise my hand, but I'm always willing to make a comment or two. So, I wanted to also, I remember the Blue Ribbon Committee as well, and the leadership of then Mayor Hollister and the business owners who got together and, you know, fought tooth and nail to basically save GM and keep it here in the city of Lansing. And I'm so pleased with this regional partnership. It's maybe not a Blue Ribbon Committee, but I think it's a committee for the future, and that's what we're looking at. You know, I do this work, you know, for a living, and the speed of business is the speed of business, and sometimes we don't get the luxury of fly specking every little line because of that, and we are competing on a global scale. I agree with you that the, losing the battery plant, Ford battery plant, was a wake-up call for our state. And so, to have all of us, you know, all hands on deck, you know, come together to put this together, and I understand that it may not happen, that's just the way the business goes, but we have to be ready. And I think that we are, and not just here, but at LCC and with our education, I mean, we have the best workers in the world here in this region, and I think that goes a long way as well, and our labor, our organized labor and our trades are the best. Thank you, Price. You can pay me later. But I am 100% supportive of this, and again, it's not my, I don't like late items either, and I don't like last-minute stuff as well, but this is something that I understand has to move fastly and move at the speed of business, as I say, so I will be supporting it as well. Thank you.
Mr. President, I neglected to transfer a message, but he, Bob showers with Clinton County and Cam Washburn, the chair, wanted me to note that you and others, I don't know who, maybe they've received texts or something, and they absolutely want to, like Jeremy Widdam from Inken County, want to convey their support of Clinton County as well.
Can I add to that? Both UAWs have contacted, I don't know if they contacted you all, but Mike Huerta and Ben Franz both contacted me also this afternoon, so both UAWs are supportive. Councilmember Wood, and then Councilmember Garza. You good? Hussein, then Garza, excuse me.
You know, and actually, I'll just reiterate, I was actually going to say a lot of what Pat had to say. I appreciate you laying out, we've had a lot of conversations with a lot of constituents since this news was made, and you laying out the competition that we're in, and the way that you did, I really appreciate that. Set aside the fact that we are competing against entities from all across the planet, really, frankly, for these types of investments, but we're in a fierce battle stateside. And I think you're correct, you know, when you say, I mean, we've been getting our butts kicked by Tennessee and Kentucky and Ohio, and the $1.3 billion investment, obviously, in North Carolina that was just made, in terms of the news just made recently, all of those, you know, I think have kind of rocked us to our core. I so appreciate the administration and the legislature working these past several, I mean, we often talk about the partisanship, we talk about the finger pointing, we talk about the gridlock, and what they did was quite fantastic, and it really is kind of a, and again, you laid this out, but kind of a three-piece puzzle. And so I really want to thank them, I also want to thank the Board of Water and Light, I see Dick, but I also see Kelvin back there, and we appreciate what you guys did to make sure that we're able to offer some of the most competitive rates in the nation as well. That's huge. And then, candidly, the administration in the city council, because we had to move lightning quick too, and I know that President Spatafor and the mayor have reached out to everybody to ensure that we could, and getting awfully close to the holidays, but to make sure that we could have this hearing, and my understanding is everybody said, yeah, whatever we need to do, if I have to cancel plans, if we have to push back the vacation, let's get this thing done because we know what this, you know, what this means for the city of Lansing and really the region, frankly. So I just wanted to thank everybody that is involved in working to lure this investment to our community. Again, we know there are no promises, but I think this positions us well to actually secure this investment, so I just wanted to extend my appreciation.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to be supportive of this as well, and I'm not sure if it's appropriate or not, but Michael Huerta, he reached out to me as well today, and he wanted me to read a small note. I told him I would. So it says, "Members of the board, I know you have a pack scheduled tonight, but I wanted to make sure that I briefly weighed in on the items on the agenda involving GM. There are several details that are unclear about this proposed project, but it's absolutely clear that this type of investment would be like nothing we've seen before, and we would likely be larger than both investments of Lansing Grand River and Delta Assembly, Township, Assembly Plans combined. If you couple that with the possibilities of both LGR and LDT being part of the electrical vehicle plans of General Motors' future, it seems like this could result in generations more of the partnership between Lansing and General Motors. It is my opinion that even with the portions of this investment that are still unknown, we should not let this opportunity slip away. I ask that you support this agenda item, the agenda items. Michael Huerta, President UA Local 602." I'm also a proud son of a UAW retiree, and it provided me with a great upbringing. I mean, you're talking about 1,000, thousands of construction jobs, 1,700 permanent jobs starting at $50,000 a year is what I'm hearing. I mean, that's huge for our economy, our regional economy, and when you talk about what does the city get, I mean, true economic development, you're hiring local jobs, I mean, providing local jobs for local workers, they're turning around, spending money in the barber shops and the restaurants and everything else around the city of Lansing. So, I'm 100% supportive of this. If I could vote twice, I would, and thank you for the regional partnership we have. Thanks for being here tonight. Thank you, Mayor Shore.
Good news, Councilmember Garza, you can vote tonight at Cow, and then again at Council, just for good measure. All right, very good. Any others? I do want to, since we're all set, okay, I want to say thank you to everyone. I'm thrilled to be moving this forward tonight. Lansing has always played a key part of the automotive industry, and I'm not surprised to see that we're competing to play a part of the future of mobility in this country and the world. But that we're even competing speaks, I think, to the quality of work of our UAW members and the faith in this and the faith in this community that these companies have relative to communities across the globe and the work that's been done by all the parties mentioned today. When Mayor Shore approached me, kind of sheepishly, but pretty bullishly actually, considering our usual interactions about sidestepping, my usual deadlines and strong desire to avoid these types of last-minute issues, I didn't hesitate because Bob is absolutely right. This is one of the most significant economic development votes we may take on this body and will have a decades-long impact on our community and perhaps the global automotive industry. So it was a no-brainer for us to get this done. And I will remind you all, 4:30 Monday, we have a special meeting to consider the final pieces of this package, but I would ask the Vice President to please move the resolutions.
Sure. So I'd first move the Second Amendment to the Lansing Delta Township Public Act 425 Agreement.
That is a proper motion. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mr. Vice President.
Sure. I'll move the resolution that pertains to the Renaissance Zone for Altium Cells LLC for property located at 8100 Davis Highway.
That is a proper motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Mr. Vice President.
Sure. So this is the resolution that pertains to setting a hearing. This would be December 20th at 4:30, and this is for the industrial facilities exemption certificate.
That is a proper motion. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Wood.
And just for clarification, we are voting on it on that same night.
Yes, the special meeting will be the hearing and the vote.
All right. Just want to make sure the public understands that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries unanimously. With that, we conclude the agenda of the Committee of the Whole at 6:32.
Mr. President, could I just give you late breaking news from Delta Township?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, they just voted unanimously to approve their amended 425 agreement.
Very good. Pieces are coming together. And I see Dick in the back, so make sure your board follows suit tomorrow, Mr. Peffley. Appreciate that. Very good. With no further business for the Committee of the Whole, we adjourn until council at 7:00 PM.